All right, I'll call the meeting to order. It's 7:02. Judy, can you take role? And number two, special recognition of the Speech and Debate State Champions. So I'll give you guys the floor.
We're really excited to have you. And last month, we talked about you. So this month, we wanted to have you come in. And maybe if you have you got something prepared to kind of show us kind of what you do? Great, because that's what we want to see.
You can stand over there, you can stand over here, where you want to go.
I can stand there.
I can stand over there. There's more space.
Okay. Don't be nervous.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here you go.
We won't be performing for you.
Yeah, I mean, so we're debate partners, and we do the policy debate. And that thing goes about an hour and a half long. Also, we talk crazy speeds, and it's not even worth watching. I mean, you don't want to sit through the debate round. But, I mean, we can tell you what it's about. And so, we're given a topic to debate on. And you don't really get a choice of what you get to debate. You have to go two rounds, aff and neg.
This year, our topic was education policy, and whether we should be reforming it through funding or regulation. And this year, we went along the route of mostly regulation. And...
Yeah. So, I mean, that's what we did. And honestly, I mean, we won in that, so that's cool.
You won. Congratulations.
Yeah, and we brought our O-O champion and our poetry competitor.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
They're going to show you snippets of what their events are like. The O-O is a speaking event, less of like the dramatic acting, or the boring debating. And just all about presentation, 10 minutes of whatever he wants to talk about. And I'll let Alex take the reins from here.
Also, before he does that, though, we just wanted to thank you guys for all the support that you give us and our program. It really means a lot. And, yeah.
We're very proud of you. But I also wanted to recognize Angel for he is a state vice president for FCC LA. That's an amazing honor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, how's it going?
All right. Thank you.
In 1977, George Lucas, a skinny, bearded, pre-hipster filmmaker from California, made a movie that nobody thought would work. He took the risk against all odds to bring his vision of an incredible sci-fi world to life. This vision was, of course, Star Wars. The story of Star Wars has existed since the dawn of time. From the story of Moses to the story of The Lion King, the patterns of which Star Wars is just one prominent example, have shaped human progress, defined human psychology, and demonstrated that what Joseph Campbell called "the monument" is really what unites us all. In the wise words of Alec Guinness, "It surrounds us and penetrates us. It binds the galaxy together, just like the Force." So, my young-ish Padawans, join me as we make the Kessel Run in under 10 minutes. We'll hone our Jedi senses as we take a look at what Star Wars means and why we should care. "Star Wars: An Old Hope," by, you know, me. Thank you.
So, he didn't do his whole O, because we were just showing snippets, previews. And up next, we have Michaela's Poetry. Poetry is a junior-senior event. That's an evolution from prose. It's about narrating a story. And then that's like prose-poetry combined. The only difference is, poetry, of course, instead of it being any sort of writing, it has to be poetry. So it has to be written by poet. And again, she's only going to do about half of it, I think. Typically, the O would be 10 minutes. Typically, the poetry would be eight. So...
All right. Great. Thank you.
He says, "The problem with teachers is, what's a kid gonna learn from someone who thought their best option in life was to become a teacher?" Taylor Mollie became famous as both a poet and a teacher. His works explore the many ups and downs of working with kids. Like, today, for example, there are a lot of adults here today impacting the lives of kids in really positive ways, when they could be anywhere else, doing anything else. So, thanks. Poems by Taylor Mollie. He reminds the dinner guests that it's true what they say about teachers. Those who can do, and those who can't teach. "I decide to bite my tongue instead of his, and resist the temptation to remind the dinner guests that it's also true what they say about lawyers, because we're eating, after all, and this is polite company. I mean, you're a teacher, Taylor. Be honest. What do you make? And I wish he hadn't done that, asked me to be honest, because, you see, I have this policy about honesty. And butt-kicking. If you ask for it, then I have to let you have it. You want to know what I make? I make kids work harder than they thought they ever could. I make a C+ feel like a Congressional Medal of Honor, and an A- feel like a slap in the face. How dare you waste my time with anything less than your very best? I make kids sit through 40 minutes of study hall in absolute silence. No, you may not work in groups. No, you may not ask a question. Why won't I let you get a drink of water? Because you're not thirsty, you're bored, that's why. I make parents tremble in fear when I call home. Hi, this is Mr. Mollie. I hope I'm not calling at a bad time. I just wanted to talk to you about something your son said today. He said, 'Leave the kid alone.' I still cry sometimes, don't you? And it was the noblest act of courage I have ever seen. I make parents see their kids for who they are and what they can be. You want to know what I make? I make kids wonder, I make them question, I make them criticize, I make them apologize, and mean it. I make them write, I make them read, read, read. I make them spell "definitely beautiful," "definitely beautiful," "de-finitely BA-utiful" over and over and over again, until they never misspell either one of those words again. I make them show all of their work in math and hide it on their final drafts in English. I make them understand that if you have this, then you follow this. And if anyone ever tries to judge you by what you make, you give them this. Let me break it down for you. You know what I'm saying is true. Teachers make a difference. What about you?
We can obviously see why you guys bring home the hardware. You've done an amazing job. We are so proud of you, and I'm going to take a picture. Everybody's looking for best. And congratulations, and much more comes. I mean, it's so exciting, and you have a pretty good teacher. So, we're pretty excited about that. So, thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You're free. You're free. You're not going to sit around and board stuff.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I think if you ever had any question about what we do here, it doesn't take much to let you know that we, at all levels of everything, we do have success. We do some bright things for kids. Really neat bunch of kids.
All right, number three, the approval of the consent agenda. All the following items, which concern reports and items of routine nature, normally approved. The board meetings will be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and the approval of the following. And this will be C through L. We're going to omit A and B for the next meeting. So it'll be C through L. If you guys have any questions or need some more time, take your time and go through it.
There's a resignation in there from Richelle. And then I got one today. And so, Todd Swalford has taken a decision downtown with, what's her name?
Chief Autobody.
Chief Autobody. I don't know if you guys probably know Todd, because he's a resident, and I've not been here as long, but he is an amazing artist. And so, what he's going to do is be able to follow kind of what he does. But I will say this, he's been an amazing employee for us, and I do appreciate what he's done this year. I think Ms. Richmond would say the same thing. So, we do appreciate that. Hate to lose him, but glad to see him following what he really is talented with. That's not going to happen.
Anybody need any more time to go through your questions? If not, looking for motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve C through L. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
You second?
Yes.
Okay.
Amber?
Can we be quiet?
Sorry. Now I'm having a brain selected.
Little Phil?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyatt?
Yes.
And that was just C through L.
And before you go on with number four, I'm going to ask that you table this one.
Number four? Okay. So number four will be tabled, skipping to number five. Number five, discussion and possible vote to purchase a 14-passenger vehicle.
Okay. Here's where we are. We go first. Mostly, we go crazy in the spring, when we get so active and so busy. And so, the conversation that Sharon and I have been having is, do we need another Suburban? Well, that was kind of where I was headed, until I went to administrators' meeting, and they had a 14-passenger V8, no CDL required, kind of a mini-bus. And the price range is about the same. It ranged anywhere from $49 to $52. And when you're looking at one of the school Suburbans, you're going to be looking in the same area as the Suburban. And the Suburban will only hold eight, maximum, and nine little ones, little people. And so, when you're getting the big kids in... And next year, one of the things we were looking at is that, right now, we have 14 kids signed up to go career tech, which is an amazing number. I'm so excited. But they sift out, sometimes they get over there and they don't really like, you know, it's not what we thought it would be. Or they get over there and they love it, and tell a friend, and then somebody else jumps on the bus. So, doing the 14-passenger would kind of kill a couple of birds with one stone, as opposed to just buying a Suburban that would not meet some needs for bigger groups. And so, what I did was, I asked Sharon to get a couple of quotes, because I felt like it was going to come in over $50,000, so we would have to have the three. But most of these places that we're dealing with are on the state contract. So when they're on the state contract, you don't necessarily have to go out solicit for bids, because the state's already said that they're doing best, that they can buy the $1,000 for you. And so, there were two that came in, and one is Midwest Bus Sales, one is Summit Bus, out of Oklahoma City. Midwest is out of, they're out of Oklahoma City also. You see them when you drive by on 40, on through the city. And one bid came in at $50,050, and one bid came in at $49,273. They're apples to apples, and I'm going to pass these around, trying to look at what the, take your time, do that. I didn't make five copies of all of that. If you have questions, I can answer them for you. It would be an expense out of our general fund, which we are kind of trying to watch. But the reality is, we need the vehicle. I think I will try to push large buses to maybe next summer, to go one more year on large buses, and just try to do this as a small way to get us moving in some other directions. And a lot of times, when Speech and Debate go, they take two Suburbans. And so, when they're gone for a day span, nobody else has anything to try. And Sharon does an amazing job of scheduling that. And I would not want that job, because there are people that aren't happy, because they didn't get their request in first. And so, and she's, she doesn't have any problem telling them no. Yay. But that was just some discussion I wanted to have. If you want to discuss it more, we don't have to vote on it tonight. We can talk about it, or, and we can bring it back in June. Either way, both of these guys are ready to provide us with a bus. The only thing that will not be part of that cost is like the printing of public schools, putting all the painting on and what we do. That's going to bring you anywhere from $500 to $4,000, depending on what you want on there. And there's some pretty cool stuff out there. You know, you can, some of the school little buses that drive in, really, will be sharp, and kids can use them. And I also thought it was a vehicle that we could take to board meetings, that our administrators could take to meetings. It's a big enough thing, you can jump in one and get a gas vehicle, like I said. Nobody has to have a CDL to drive it. And I feel like it will kind of help the issue that we have with, especially in the spring, with everybody going.
The classes, the Alvin, we've got 14 signed up. What are they taking now?
We don't have that many.
We didn't have that many.
And she takes a Suburban. And we also get reimbursed for that transportation cost from the career tech. So that do pay us twice a year. They get us a...
Well, I know at one point, we'd kind of talked, you know, we've got one older Suburban, so we were looking at maybe selling, trading it in for two more. But we kind of felt like that was a Band-Aid to a major problem anyways.
Yeah. I do think that what we'll try to do, and Croft is amazing, we take it down there and they fix everything. Both of these buses would be able to go to Croft, and Croft could service them. I think that what we'll do for a year is just hang with what we have, and if... The issue that I had with the ag truck, and instead of waiting another year for that, was that we did have some trouble with it, and we did have kids break down, and I don't want that. But, so we went ahead and bought a new ag truck. But we're going to try to make the Suburbans and the buses go one more year, and then just reevaluate. Because I feel like, I say this every year, I feel like next summer, we'll be doing this much. All of a sudden, it all comes to next summer, and it's like, what happened? But I really do think that we will be able to maybe just focus on transportation, instead of a roof. And, you know, we've got stuff going on that's bond-related, that's not in our expense, but it's still, you know, it's still money spent, which you're out of the bond.
I don't know if this is figured in, but I know just steel prices, aluminum prices have all gone up with the tariffs. I don't know if this is already included, but I've done some things that I've noticed that haven't been done them a month later, that the prices were going to be quite a bit more.
Yeah. And, you know, it's completely at your discretion, if voting on it tonight, or waiting and getting more information, that's, we're not, it's not a big hurry, you know. This is really for next year, and for, well, this summer, there'll be ball teams to take it to camp. There'll be, I don't know if you guys have looked at the summer calendar, even on School Week, every day has a black dot on it. I'm like, I thought summer was supposed to be no dots.
If we got it today, or if we approved it today, when would we take delivery on it? And would it have been sooner than to take care of some stuff?
I believe that they've gotten ready to go. The only thing they'll have to wait on is what, aside from what we want painted on it, and then getting that ready. I think we would have it in 30 days.
Does anybody have any other questions, or thoughts, concerns, grabs, comments?
Do we have to go with a certain graphic person?
You know, we don't. We usually go with who they used all the time, time again, just because that's what they do for a living. We don't.
I saw that this one's about, I mean, anywhere from $500 to $3,000. So it's a $1,000 cheaper. This one was $5,000 to $4,000.
And this would be, this is the lower bid. So he was higher on the, on his voting.
Yeah, he's higher on the traffic.
So we would take this bid, and then we'd be held to the 5 to 3. And that would be better.
Or Jason talked about it.
That would be my, anyway, if my recommendation would be to take the lower bid, that would be a few off.
I'll make a motion to approve the lower bid. Get it out of the way.
Second.
Amber's second. Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyatt?
Yes.
Can you tell me what the bid amounts were?
$49,273.
For Midwest?
And that is Midwest. And then $50,050 from Summit.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll have that, and the people this summer will be so excited, because they're going all over the place.
All right. Number six, vote to approve or disapprove resolution for the Schools and Libraries' Universal Services E-Rate for the 1819. This resolution authorizes filing of the Form 471 application for funding year 1819 and the payment of the applicant's shares upon approval of funding and receipt of the services.
E-Rate is a federal service that helps us pay for technology. And so, every year, this is a housekeeping item. We have to approve it, the board has to approve it, that we will be involved in that. They pay a portion, a pretty good portion, of like our IT, our, oh gosh, servers, and, you know, the nuts and bolts of technology. So that's what they do.
That's kind of a housekeeping item, too.
Yes, it is. It's a housekeeping item. We'd have to do that every year, but I kind of wanted to let you know what it was. It's just money that we get, because we apply for it. And then, there's a portion of it that comes from federal, and there's a portion of it that comes from Oklahoma. And so, we apply for both of those, and are able to pay for internet service, pay for a majority, a lot of those things. So that's what that is.
I'll make a motion to approve the universal E-Rate for the 1819.
Second.
I made a motion. Amber's second. Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyatt?
Yes.
Number seven, discussion and vote to approve or not approve the alcohol and drug testing for the bus drivers and student extracurricular activities for the 1819 school year.
This is the same company that we've been doing this, since I've been here. They do a good job. They're very professional, they're very discreet. I don't think that we ever have any problems that, per se, and I would just recommend that we continue to go with the company that we have.
Motion to approve. A second.
Amber's made a motion. Does there any second? Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Will Hyatt?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes. Number eight, discussion and vote to surplus Chromebooks and book bags for the seniors to purchase.
There are 10 students that chose to take their device with them. And, here we go. They're back there on the back. And the agreement that we, you know, we came out with when we did the, we did the bond, was that, you know, for a very minimal price, they could buy their... And so, what we did was, we charged $10, we were going to charge $10 for the Chromebook, $10 for the book bag. So for $20, they could take their Chromebook to college with them. And so, these 10 right here, we were, I'm going to be asking you to surplus tonight. And then what we'll do is, we'll just write this, and then the technology account that we have. And then we will replace these 10, and put them in at the bottom, and go through the freshman and stuff like that. It's a pretty awesome deal.
It is cool.
Really neat.
Do we have to, is there some kind of codes we've got to put in, or at least open the doors, so that they have total access to?
Yes. She'll completely wipe it out, and it'll be, because right now, it's kind of very limited, if you've got kids that have got them. And she'll configure it to where they can still get their emails from us, because they're still doing scholarship things, and things are coming in. So she'll do everything except close down their email, and then after a while, she'll give them, and then she'll probably close her email down, too. But, yeah.
So there will be no, any filters?
Not, they won't be ours anymore. If they buy it, it'll be out of our range.
Stay right up here.
Okay.
Just their personal. It's pretty cool.
Motion to surplus.
Amber's made a motion to surplus. Well, second. Shane's second. Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyatt?
Yes.
Number nine, principals report.
We have two principals at the school staff at night, and we have a principal here. Thank you for coming, for attracting me. I think everybody's excited to meet me.
We're just at the end.
The end.
Hey, I'm hungry tomorrow.
End.
We're taking 75 kids to the Northwestern School tomorrow, the Metra Yarn Hall. Pizza, butter.
We're just going to go to the sidehouse.
All right. Times have changed. It's been a long time ago. And then, awards assembly on Wednesday, and then Wednesday. Thursday's our last day, so it's been a great year. Fast year.
It has been a crazy town.
Thursday's Thursday.
Oh, God, okay.
So, you got?
Yeah.
All right. Number 10, go ahead, Dawn.
I did want to let you know that some things that we've done just this last month, you may have seen. We have gone to online enrollment, where parents can get online. You know, when you have 200 kids in the system, you spend a lot of time signing your name and theirs, and they're social, and keep going. So we're hoping that this is going to be easier for our parents to be able to just get online. We will provide a couple of days, the first and the second, for parents who don't, maybe don't have access to internet or the computer, to come in and use ours and enroll. But there still will be enrollment days, because some of the parents have to come in, and there's certain forms that they just have to sign. So we'll do that, and we're really excited about that. That's going to save us some money, because since I came on board, we have mailed enrollment packets to every single child in our district. And it was important enough to me to spend that money, so that that was in people's hands a couple of weeks before. And it worked a lot more smoothly than just, hey, come on this day, and here's 5,000 papers, and fill it out and sign your name. So it will save us the mailing and the time that it takes to put all that together. Not that we wouldn't do it, we would be glad to do it for any parent who still needs it. So, pretty neat, the things that Amanda Tucker does, I'm just going to go ahead and say it, she's amazing. Also, we, I don't, I don't think that, we probably know every single thing that happens for our kids here, but when some really, really amazing thing happens, I really do feel like we need to, I need to share it with you. There's a couple of things that have happened for FCC LA this year. I did introduce Angel as a state officer. We did fly-fly, like we did for Academic Allstate all year long, because he is a, he made a video, it went to all the chapters that they voted. And it is really an amazing honor, not just for Angel, but for Heather. Heather has worked so hard, and has made a program that is, we are, and the two things I'm about to tell you are, and we have, Bridgette is a regional vice president, is, so is it called, regional?
District.
District vice president, along with?
Taryn.
Taryn. So they went, and they ran for office, and so, we've got kids that are learning the leadership that you saw here, that they're going to be able to take and be successful after they leave us. But the first thing I want to let you know is that she is a Gold Star chapter. And there are only 40 chapters, no, there's only, this award's given to chapters that earn 40 or more points during the year for their participation in activities. Only 24 chapters across the state have received this award. So she's one of 24 that has gone above and beyond, and the state recognized her, Sydney Allo, that said that. And also, she, her chapter has received the 75% NACS class membership award. And that means that 75% of her membership has, is, 75% of her kids and her program are in the leadership portion of FCC LA. You know, they could be in Family and Consumer Science and not be in FCC LA, and do the things like we just talked about. But I wanted you to know that there are, there's more than 53,000 students in Family and Consumer Science. Only 25% of these students that are FCC LA members. And there's only six in the state that receive this award. So her program is top-notch, and we are so fortunate. I, you know, we talk a lot about activities, and, you know, sometimes we don't recognize the regular classroom teachers, but guys, we've got those, too. And the teachers at the elementary, and the teachers in the high school and the middle And the, the teachers at the elementary and the teachers at the high school and the middle school are just as Gold Star as the, in quality, as our, our activities are, and so I just really wanted to let you know tonight that, um, we're, we're doing some pretty good things here, and I'm very proud of all the people here. And it is because we have, we started at the top with good leadership, leadership teams, and we have gone on down, and we have really good, really good results from what we do. Um, I do want you to know, changing kind of, um, to let you know, Michelle Baldwin, um, is our English teacher at the high school level, applied for some of Lowe's grants, they knocked them. She won a five thousand dollar grant and a twenty-five hundred dollar grant to develop a student, um, commons area over there in that little plot of land between the gym and the, and the middle school building. So, they'll be putting up some tables and chairs and awning, Lowe's will come out, do fencing, um, it's just a thrill. I told her I would match the five thousand dollars, and so she'll have twelve thousand and five hundred dollars to, for their team of, and people to, to make something really cool, and that, just that area that we have is just kinda there.
That's cool.
So, it's really exciting. Very proud of her, appreciated her so much. Um.
Who wrote that one?
Michelle Baldwin. Jeremy says she owns Lowe's, she used to work there before she taught, and she's, and they like her better. But there's a lot of schools that don't, that did not receive that one, very proud of her. Um, I have forty of you set up, I think Jeremy and I knew for this week for ag teacher. Very excited about the quality of applicants that we've received, and feel like that we are going to be able to, uh, get somebody in here that will, um, continue and, and will grow and, and, uh, do what we need to do, so, you know, let's just go ahead and throw some more stuff into the last four days of school. No problem. But, uh, we really did wanna get that done and get the kids meeting this person and feeling good, care about what's going on with that program, so. And it is twelve-month employ, so I usually do not, I'm usually not involved in Jeremy here, Bruce hires, I just, and usually I just say, who you got? Obviously, well, great. But when it's twelve-month employ, I try to be involved because there'll be times during the year that it's me here with that employee as opposed to the principals who aren't on a twelve-month contract. So, um, other than that, yes, we're at the end, things are going well, and, uh, the roof starts Monday, uh, basketball court should've started today, I'm not sure that it did, but it should've started today. And, uh, we're just, present a busy summer.
You need business, number eleven?
There is now a business.
Number twelve, go ahead. Amber's motion. Paul's second. Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyatt?
Yes.